Good evening and welcome to the Merrimack School Board Meeting. This Monday night, March 20th, 2017. We could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. In case you notice, I'm not the normal chair. I'm acting as chair tonight for tonight's meeting. Chairwoman Barnes is excused with another obligation tonight, so other than that, I think we're ready to go. So item number two on the agenda for this evening is public participation. This time is open for members of the public to come up and speak at the microphone. I'm looking in the audience and seeing no public members that wish to participate this evening, so we'll close public participation. And then we'll move to item three on the agenda. Request to administer surveys to students at James Master Coler Upper Elementary School for doctoral study titled "Exploring the Relationship Between Social Media Use in Pre-Adolescent Children and Social Skills." I'd like to invite to the table John Fabrizio, Marsha McGill, and Cynthia Hess. And before I hand it over, I'd like to say that the goal of this evening is to hear about the requests that's in front of us, to be able to ask questions, but will not be taking decision at this meeting, but to gather as much information as we'd like. So I'll pass it off to Mr. Fabrizio. Thanks.
Well, good evening and thank you for allowing us to come tonight to talk to you. I have with me tonight Cynthia Hess to my right and Marsha McGill, who you know, the principal of the upper elementary school. Cynthia, about two years ago now, came into the fold and came to me through Bob Walrath. And Bob Walrath is a school psychologist who's been in our district for over probably 25 years now, working with our students. And he also, on his dual role, is the head of the doctoral program for school psychologists at Riviera College. And Cynthia was one of his students and came through to me and said, at the time, we were looking for someone to come work in our high school and work with students who had identified with either emotional disturbance or students who had counseling for anxiety or other things in their IEPs. And I needed some support in doing that. So we contracted with Cynthia to work part-time with us, and she has just done a phenomenal job and touched the lives of many students at our high school over the last couple of years. And as she's done that, she's been continually to work on her doctorate. And she approached me probably about a couple of months ago and said, it's time for me to start doing my work on my dissertation, and I need some students and do some surveying. And I said, sounds great. Let's talk to Marge, and then we'll have to go forward to the board. So that's really where we are. And I will turn it over to Cynthia and let her kind of talk about what her project will entail.
After I turn it on, or John turns it on for me. Okay, well, first of all, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking the time to be here and Ms. McGill to come and support this tonight, too. I'm very grateful. So my project is looking at social media use in pre-adolescent children and seeing if there's a relationship between that and their social skills. And the interest in this study came from a recognition that a lot of communication is making a shift from face-to-face communication to more online communication. And it is having an impact. You know, the research points out an impact in terms of some anxiety and depression in people who are using social media a lot, mostly in those 18 and older. Most of the research is done on that population. There's a small amount of population done on youth under 18, but hardly any on children between the ages of 10 and 12. And the reason is that because they're a delicate, tender population, and you have to jump through a lot of hoops in order to even gain permission to conduct research with this age group, I felt it was worth it because they're at such a critical crossroad in terms of social development. For the most part, their main source of influence or sphere of influence is shifting from the family to their peers. And if their peer interactions are happening mostly online and less and less face-to-face, I just wanted to see if this had any impact on social skills. I don't know if it will or not. My study has a lot of limitations, so I think it's an interesting place to start, just to see what shows up. So that's my study, in a nutshell. So to conduct this study, I created a social media survey. And I sent you a sample of the survey, but I had to make some changes because I administered it to a school, to participants in a school who had signed up last week, and it was, some of the wording was a little too complex for them. I asked them to do a task that they didn't have the skills to do, and that's namely estimate time. So I made some changes. I resubmitted my survey to my dissertation committee. It looks like it's going to be okay because I didn't add anything. I just removed things and made some changes in how I calculate the data. So I didn't add anything to the survey. So I think it's going to be fine. There's a small demographic piece so that I can describe my study participants. That's the purpose of demographic information. And the hope is to get as clear a snapshot as possible of my study subjects, so if in the future somebody wants to replicate my study, they have an idea of how it can be done. So the goal of the demographic information is just descriptive, so I can describe broadly the population that participated in my research. And it also helps me to look for limitations, because it could be just a small subset of people choose to, and it might depend on their education level, it might depend on their income level, it might be two-family homes that choose to participate in my study. So some limitations to the validity of my data could be impacted, you know, it could be impacted. And so I have to know who is actually participating in my study, so I can look for those things. So the parents have to sign a consent form, and no child can participate without the parent consent form. And when I went to the school last week, when I showed up, the kids were like, oh, yeah, actually, I did want to do that. But no, 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 they cannot do it. I have the papers that are signed, and those are the only students who will be permitted to participate. So the parents have to sign a consent form, and the child also has to sign an assent form. So there will not be a case where a child, where a parent wants a child to participate, but the child doesn't want to. And actually, this happened last week, too. A young girl came up and said that her parents wanted her to participate, but once I got there, she said she didn't want to. So that's no problem. I anticipate that I will administer my first survey, and it took the quickest kids about 10 minutes. The slower kids took about 30 minutes. And I anticipate that I'll go back to administer my social skills, and some kids will be like, I've had enough of surveys. So they can drop out at any point. I hope that of the 16, I hope I get 10 good surveys. Maybe I'll get eight. And that's out of a total of 52 students. So, you know, again, it's, you just keep plugging away. So they have the consent, assent, and then there's a parent demographic, and that, again, gives me some information of how to describe the participants in my study. Did I leave anything out? And you also have my packet that gives just a brief description. Any questions?
Yes, does anybody have questions at the table? Naomi.
Hi, thanks so much for coming tonight. And I also want to mention, I had an opportunity to talk with Cindy briefly a few weeks ago and learn some more of the details, and it was very nice of you to find the time. Thank you. I wondered if you could talk a little bit to the benefits that you feel this may bring to schools in general, having this kind of information once you complete the study.
Well, I think that for schools, schools are in such a tricky position where social media is concerned. And one thing my study is not looking at directly is the issue around bullying and cyberbullying, for sure. But I know that schools are often in the middle of those situations, and parents call the schools and expect the schools to deal with that when it comes up, when the kids take what started at school, home, and finish it online at night, where it's a little bit more anonymous. But anyway, so how it will benefit schools, I'm hoping. There are a lot of media, kind of, education programs out there, and perhaps some knowledge about the impact of this new mode of communication will help schools just determine, perhaps, what role they should play in educating kids about social media, about online communication, about the risks and benefits. There are some very nice benefits also to online communication and participating in this form of communication. I don't want to say social media, because they're actually not supposed to have a social media account under the age of 13. But of the 16 that I have surveyed already, they did. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
I just wanted to say that on page 39, Skype, the social media site, is spelled incorrectly. The letters Y and P are flipped.
Oh.
I don't know if that's something that you'd...
Dr. Shormfeld did tell me I had a typo.
You found it.
And you found it? You found it?
Yeah, and then my other question was, if you don't feel that you got a good enough sample size from the data you collected from Merrimack students, would you go to other school districts and attempt to survey them, too?
Yeah. I have a meeting tomorrow with another school that has already agreed to participate, so tomorrow I'm meeting with them to just figure out when I'm going to administer my surveys. So from that school, I sent out 100 letters, and I got 46 participants. So I was pretty happy about that, actually. And then I have another one up north. I live up north, and so I asked John if I could also contact Ms. McGill. Is it Ms., not doctor, Mrs.? Just because I've had a great experience working here for the last couple of years. It's been such a warm and welcoming environment, and I thought, well, I'll ask them if they want to participate.
Cindy?
I just wondered if you could take a second and talk a little bit about the privacy of the data, of anything from the consent forms to if there's anything you're doing to depersonalize the information and so on.
Sure. None of the surveys ask for any identifying information short of male, female, age, birthdate. So that's the only real identifying information on both of the surveys. Of course, I have the consent and the assent forms. So the standard protocol is that I leave those in a locked cabinet for seven years, for seven years. So that's what I will do with them. And the other piece of it is that I don't know, I have a list of students who are participating, but when I, I use the assent and the consent forms to get their name and their birthdate, and then I will enter their demographic information into my spreadsheet, which does not include any names. Then that will be put away, and then I have no way of knowing my, the students, their connection to their demographic information. So I don't have any way of knowing that. I don't even now.
Directly from the school, or would it go with a cover from maybe one of the principals?
Well, Mrs. McGill.
Cindy and I talked about that, and we thought that maybe there needed to be a note on the front that came from me. We thought we'd start by doing a fifth-grade PLT and a sixth-grade PLT, so that would be approximately 100 students at each grade level, and we'd start there to see if she could get her sampling size.
Okay, that would make sense to me, because as a parent, if I got it home, I'd want to know that how it's relating and supported by the school administration. So, all right, thank you.
I'm going to break protocol real quick. A follow-on question to that. So when I was reviewing this, you have the parent demographic information where you ask questions around things like salary level and how many people in household and things like that. So two questions about that. One, how do you handle if a parent opts not to answer some of these? Because usually if you go and do a survey, a lot of these questions you've asked are optional. People can opt out.
Right.
And two, if you're truly separating the consent forms from the data, you talked earlier about trying to tie in, like, some of the demographic information for the results. Are you trying to map the demographic of the parents to the way the students responded, like, students that have higher salary in family income versus ones with lower? I mean, trying to figure out how you take an anonymous demographic and tie it to an anonymous...
Right, right. No, the demographics are just used to describe my study. So if, let's just say that 75% of the people have a salary over $75,000. So that's important information, and that could be a limitation also to my study, particularly because I wouldn't have gotten participants from another demographic. So it won't be tied to my results, but it could be a limitation to my results because it's not a broad sample. It's a very narrow sample of people. So that's why I have to ask that information, because I have to see if I'm getting a broad sample, because that's how I'm going to know, kind of, the validity, I guess, of my results.
My only caution would be, you may not get, people may choose not to answer some of those demographic questions.
No.
And therefore, you may, even though you're trying, you may not get as much as you're hoping for.
No, I've actually experienced that. So I've gone to two districts up north, and I have about 60 participants, and I would say, I think it's 10 that left that blank. So it's actually a question I have for my dissertation committee, is what to do with the blank information. I don't know if it means it's not, that I can't use that one. It's possible that it means that. But I know I need, in order for my study to have enough power and be able to kind of show whether or not there's a relationship, I need 100 participants. And I figure it's going to take probably 150, maybe, to get 100 good surveys. Even in the ones that I've administered, there were, I administered 16. I would say at least six of them I can't use, just the kid's surveys. So that's like part of it.
Right. My only, is when, I don't know if it's in Marsha's letter or whatever it is, but you may want to explain a bit about how you're going to do the privacy to make people feel more comfortable. Because I know in other surveys in the past, when we talk about standardized testing, there's a lot of concern about privacy of information, especially when you ask demographic info. So whatever method you're going to use, try to explain it so people feel more comfortable. So maybe you're more likely to get the responses that you're looking for, so.
Sure, I can take a look at that. The other thing, too, that hopefully people will take comfort in is that none of the information's going to be online. It's all on paper, and it will be locked, so.
So Michael?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Cindy, for going over what you're going to be doing the survey for. I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of the things we've already said, is that it is an opt-in survey, so I think people listening should understand that. I definitely think that it's great that the information is separate from the individuals, so there's no privacy issues there, so. And also, I just wanted to ask if you, I think there was some mention, would you be coming back to actually share the results with us?
I would love to.
I would appreciate that, so.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody else has any questions on this side of the table over here? Any questions? Once, twice? Seeing none? Thank you for presenting. We'll take this up at our next meeting and vote. If we can do it on consent, if people are comfortable, we can put it on the consent agenda for next week, or we can have an open agenda topic. It's, it sounds like I'm seeing nods for consent agenda on that. So we'll put on our consent agenda for next week, and then you'll get an answer, you know, answer that, so.
It's wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. Okay. Moving on the agenda, item number four, review of proposed 2017 voter information guide with Matt Chevanel. So Mr. Chevanel, we'll let you kick this discussion off.
Okay, thank you very much. As requested, you have before you in your packet a copy of the voter's guide that will potentially go out before the election on Tuesday, April 11th, for your review and any comments you may have. I did notice I did make a spelling error on the last page where it says "school district voter worksheet." I transposed a couple of letters there. But any thoughts that you may have to improve this or whatever, if now is the proper time to do so, you could let me know in public session.
Okay, anybody at the table have any comments? I have one, but I'll let others chime in. I'm not seeing anybody. I'll jump in while other people still look. So I think this is good. It's, again, similar to other years where you give a description of the warrant article and then more information sort of supporting it. One of the things we did both during our budget discussion as well as at the deliberative session a week ago, it was two weeks ago? Two weeks ago. Almost two weeks ago, is that we also had a handout that had a couple of pictures in it. One describing the layout of the asbestos, for the asbestos warrant article, and the other, the sort of picture of the high school. I know that you said before that those don't work very well in a sort of a two-color, black-and-white style printout, which is what this would be. But what I would suggest is that within each article, maybe you put an easy-to-follow link to the district website where the pictures are, so that people that want more information can just immediately go. I know at the end, you say, "For more information, go to sau26.org." But I think if you had a link to, an easy-to-follow link for those pages for the pictures in each of the articles, it would help people to quickly go and get more information should they want it. So that'd be my comment into that.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
Okay. I saw Michael first, and then Cindy.
I definitely agree. There may be a way within the software that you guys have for the website to set up aliases so that you can shorten the URLs. So if you need more information, I can help with that.
Yeah.
But I think that's actually a great point. I was thinking exactly the same thing, just a little more information to point people to would be great. But I think it did a great job. Thank you.
Cindy?
I would say just a small other suggestion along on that same section, because I really like this worksheet. I think it's helpful as a voter, I know, to be able to get kind of your answers ahead of time and kind of go prepared. One thing I might suggest is just a small note section at the end. You never know what they want to write down. Of course, they can still write it anyways, but it kind of gives them the cue, since it is a worksheet, that if they wanted to write some of their own notes, or they might write themselves a note to follow up on one of the items or something. So it's just a small suggestion.
And I just noticed that under your worksheet, you have Article 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. Which there is no 7, so you might want to make it a 6, so.
It was just a test.
A test. Who's paying attention? Right. Okay, anybody else have any comments, questions? I think this is good. I think, I think that you were looking for the okay from us tonight to say that we have no other things to basically allow you to use this and go. So I don't think if anybody has any objections, I think you can run with this and get it printed and out to the voters well enough ahead of the vote, so. Okay. Good, you're all set. Thanks. Okay, moving right along. Item number five on the agenda, snow impacts on the 2016, 2017 school calendar. This is for Superintendent Chaffrey and Assistant Superintendent McGilafin. I want to set the context, though, that this topic is to get the updated information from the superintendent and assistant superintendent on where, what sort of investigations they've been doing about this school year. I know that there've been some discussions in parents and stuff about what we might want to do in future years, and that's certainly a valid conversation to have down the road. But I think today is to find out where we are in terms of investigations and discussions that have happened. And then on April 3rd, so two weeks from tonight, we'll have an agenda item where we'll actually talk about how we want to officially handle this school year based on the information. So tonight is mostly an update, so Superintendent, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you. So what I think you realize is that we had a school calendar printed, and on that school calendar, there were seven makeup dates listed in case we needed them. And as it turns out, thus far, we have had seven snow days, and we have had six delays. So that all becomes very important, because the statutes speak to the fact that we need to initially calculate the year by school days, the 180 school days, and we can also look at instructional hours. So in this particular instance, you need to know that, given the givens, and most school systems are up against, close to what we've been up against, we got the first communique from the Department of Education on March 13th about what to do, or how we might go about doing some kind of assessment. So the fact of the matter is, you first look at the 180 days, and then you go and do an instructional hour check. And in that, they're very specific about what you count or don't count. Mark will talk about that, because he's been working on that. So right now, one of my cautions is not making a determination about what we think the endpoint is, because we're still not out of the month of March. I've been around too long here to say that everything is going to be concluded, you know, at a given time, because just when you think that, you have another snowstorm. I think many of you remember the April 1st snowstorm that we had. It was called the April Fool's Day Storm. So you want to try and do good planning for parents and for our community, but you don't want to do it too far ahead, because if you do, you could have to back up and do it again. So that's why I want to say, the first communique we had from the Department of Ed was March 13th. Notice, the day before the major snowstorm on the 14th. So the thought is that your calculation will stay within district. That's what the department is telling you, that it doesn't want to be involved. It wants you to look first at school days, 180, and then your second calculation is instructional hours, and it tells you exactly how to go about doing that, and expects you to go through and do your calculation. So Mark is going to shortly tell you what he's been doing. And it's also important to have principal partners involved. So I want you to know that I've had a conversation with the MTA President, Don Chisholm, and the Merrimack Educational Support Staff Association President, Carol Scopa, to say, this is where we are in point in time. We really feel that our calendar will service well when all is said and done. We won't need to make adjustments other than what day is the end date. And I want to keep them abreast of what we're doing. And so both of them are cognizant of right where we are. Tomorrow, I have a... Tomorrow, I have a formal meeting with the Meramec Teachers Association Officers, which is scheduled on a monthly basis, so tomorrow we'll do kind of a more in-depth analysis of sharing with them what our calculations are, and having them take a look at them. But our intention is to come back to you on April 3rd and make what I will call a recommendation at that time, so that parents have a good understanding of how we think the year is going to conclude. So, with that, I want to turn it over to Mark, because he's done yeoman work, not only himself, but he's been working with others. And that's the important thing here, is that when we do the presentation, you'll know exactly how we got, where we got.
So, you know, we have three grade-level entities in the district. We have, four, actually. We have the three elementary schools, so that would be like one entity. We have the upper elementary school, the middle school, and the high school. And so, you have to make separate calculations for each of those based on start and end times, and the nature of the school day, you know, at each place. So, what you have to do is calculate from the official start of school, when the student's school day begins, and when the student's school day ends, and that's your base. And according to directives from the Department of Education, you have to subtract from that base time things like lunch, things like passing time, which is most applicable at the middle school and the high school. If you exceed 30 minutes of recess, for instance, you have to, any minute over that, you have to then add as well, things like homeroom, if it's not an advisory. So, all of those things need to be calculated, and you have to determine, based on that, where you are in the year for hours. The Department of Ed requires 945 hours of instructional time for elementary grades K through 6, and 990 hours of instructional time for grades 7 through 12. In addition, the state requires 450 hours for kindergarten. So, we have to, if it's the recommendation of the superintendent not to rely on the 180 school days, but rather instructional hours, we have to make sure that we meet 450 hours for kindergarten, 945 for elementary, and 990 for the grades 7 through 12. Complicating the calculation is that the high school has a schedule where three of five days are regular scheduled days, and two of any given five days are block days. So, the passing times and the lunch times are all different. So, you have to calculate the number of days that you had, the number of Monday, Tuesday, and Fridays you have in a year, and the number of Tuesdays and Thursdays you have in a year. And then you have to subtract from that the number of days that were of those days that we had off, and so on. So, I'm trying to paint the picture that it is quite a complicated undertaking. And part of the reason the superintendent said that we wish to be able to bring this to you on April 3rd is because it's as complicated as it is, if we were to come out of the chute too quickly and find out that we were just a little bit, you know, inaccurate, then we'd have to then backtrack and say, oops, sorry, we're going to need this or that. But it does appear, at least now, that the days that have been added to the calendar are going to be more than sufficient, and perhaps not all of them will be necessary in order to accomplish our instructional hours, not the 180 school days. So, happy to answer any other questions you have about that.
I think I want to add, and please join in with me, that there is somewhat of a misnomer about waiver. I think that term is thrown around, and the state would only expect you to ask for a waiver if there were a case of emergency. For example, if we had flooding going on. Do you remember when we had the May flooding? I think it was around Mother's Day. That was extraordinary, and it was, I mean, it was just, you know, out of the blue. If you had a fire in a school, if the governor declared there was a state of emergency, and I want to note that Governor Hassan and Governor Sununu, neither one of them declared a state of emergency on any of the snow days. So, I think the term waiver is thrown around, you ask for a waiver. The Department of Education, the DOE, expects that you will go back and look within your bounds and make calculation, and figure it out. But you will not ask for a waiver until you have thoroughly gone the route of instructional hours. That's why there are two paths to take, and that is the expectation. But I think that gets thrown around, and so it's very important to define it, that it's used for extraordinary circumstances. Do you agree?
I would agree. And in fact, just to support that, I had a conversation today with the administrator of this particular regulation up at the DOE, and she confirmed that same fact with me. So, we're really working very closely with the DOE, as recently as a conversation today, just to make sure that we understand, you know, what are the regs that we're needing to follow, and what would trigger any extraordinary request.
Okay. I'm going to move down the table. We'll start with Cindy.
If I understand correctly, one of the things that we would also have to consider is those delays that we've had. So, if let's say it does come down to trying to make up a couple of snow days by instructional hours, then all of a sudden, those delays that we've had are factor into that equation, because that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mark has done that.
Okay. So, it's not a matter of just, let's say you're trying to get enough hours to make up for two days, you'd have to, in order to really move that back, or whatever, you would have to make up for any of the late starts.
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, I know what it was. There's some other factors that also make it more complicated. I know you alluded to the discussions with the teachers and the support staff, but you also now, we also have to consider things like our busing, and where the drop-offs and pickups start, as well as after-school, other third-party places, like partnerships we have, let's say the tech, with other schools, right? We have to kind of factor that in when we look at the big picture. Is that, are those, are those our other factors?
I don't think they become factors if we operate within the calendar that's been defined.
Right.
So, in other words, what we're saying is, in our initial investigation, which I think Mark has been quite thorough, and we want more time to go two or three steps further, that those days that had MU on them make up, within that, somewhere lies the answer, within what has already been created, and not having to do anything else other than to prove that one of those states is the endpoint. That's what we're saying. So, to come out tonight, we're not ready, but we don't feel there is a need to do any alteration, I would say. And I think you're alluding to the fact that if we were to take days and manipulate them, or whatever, that's not our intention. Our intention is to stay within the bounds of the calendar so defined.
Okay. Thanks for that clarity. I know that there, certainly I've received some correspondence along the lines of, you know, perhaps looking at the instructional hours. I know that we heard from Amherst a couple of years ago regarding some of the transitions that they had made. But I guess what I was trying to say is, if we were to look at the instructional hours, there's a lot of factors that would go into that, such as the busing.
That's a true statement. It's not as simple as just the participants in the given day. You have to look at all the exigencies, if you will. I mean, there, we are connected to many entities, including sports, all kinds of things, and so you have to look at all of those factors.
Thank you.
Michael?
Thank you, Mark, for the detailed information outlining how you have to calculate this. There's been one, I think, misconception, maybe you can either confirm or deny here, is that everybody thinks that we're on a daily, day calendar, I guess, for schools versus an hour, which technically we are. However, we can, it sounds like, calculate based off the hours, based off the Department of Education. So, it's, one does not inhibit the other, and people need to understand that we can use hours, if needed, to calculate the right days.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. No, I just lost my train of thought.
It's just snow days.
Also, I think it should be outlined that we are within the calendar that you put forward last year at this point. So, when everybody is looking at the calendar, those MU's should be realized as days that people should be looking at, that are in school. It's just that we could get out a little early if you did your job, or like, I guess, job is school, sooner and got finished. So, I think it's clear, to clarify, is that those days are what was set, and people understand that that last day is the last MU on the calendar.
That's correct. I think, I mean, we are obligated, when the school calendar is put forward, there's an expectation that I will put those forward. As a matter of fact, you put between 30 and 60 hours worth, and when you do the calendar, we have to put down the professional development for teachers. So, there are those qualifiers that have to be put in there, and those MU's count, and we turn our calendar over to the DOE for them to look at. So, I try and encourage parents, when I'm talking with them, to think in terms of looking at those dates as if they could become realized, whether planning for camp or whatever, you know, they could be utilized, and one needs to think that way.
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to clarify for anybody that's watching, is that those MU's, I consider those, you're in school, and you might get them back to go to the beach a little early, or something like that.
Correct.
But I feel that has to be explained to the public, that those should be considered days that you are in school until, at this point, around this time of year, that you can define whether, when we'll be getting out, so.
And if, upon calculation, we feel assured of the fact that we can use hours instead of days, it might be that we can modify within the calendar that's been built.
So, thank you very much.
Any other questions down the table? I'm seeing none. Thanks for the explanation. I know that there's been a lot of questions about hours versus days, and I think it's interesting to note, you're trying to take the approach to take the days within the calendar and see if we can use hours to remove some of those days, because I think right now, everybody's just synchronously adding the days based on the number we've lost, and if we can get some of those back, because the hours we've gone, I think that's a really good idea. Obviously, a lot of the social media and feedback we've seen as a board has compared us to what Nashville has decided to do in terms of adding 14 minutes a day and look for waivers. I mean, there's a lot of things flying around in articles that may or may not be accurate. So, as we, as you report out on the 3rd, it might be good to provide some information about what you can find about why Nashville chose and why we're choosing a different route, because a lot of questions have said, you know, just add the extra time, negotiate with the teachers' unions and the support staff now, get the extra time, but it'll be interesting to find out if you can cut days by looking at hours, it may make that point less important to have as we do that. So, Michael?
Yeah, just to follow up on that, just what Andy's saying is that if you can kind of outline that, if we were to use, add 15 minutes, what all the steps would be that we'd have to go through, the teacher contracts, the this, the that, just so that maybe we just understand that moving forward.
Right.
I don't think it's something that we would adjust this year, but possibly discuss as an option if it's feasible. So, just to outline that, that would be very helpful for me.
One of the things that, and we can try and do that, one of the things that I think Mark learned today in talking with the person at the Department of Ed is that, to this point, there is only one district that has come forward with making a statement about anything, and I think that's important also, meaning I think you'll see that many are somewhat guarded, they're taking a wait-and-see approach, because again, we just don't know what we're up against. I know today is the first day of spring, and it doesn't mean much in New England, really. I mean, I've learned that, so. But I think you'll see, just some caution here, because everyone is trying to do the calculation. So, we do it once.
Right. I think it's interesting, depending on whose weather forecast you do, some of them are saying we're going to get snow Sunday and Monday, and others say it's going to be warmer, so, you know, that just shows the uncertainty that's there. Yeah, right, that's right. Anyway. So, thanks. And again, just to summarize, so the goal, we've provided input, asked some questions. The goal is, do you come back on two weeks, and sort of come back with your recommendation and based on the investigation? And again, we will, we as a board will likely take up the topic of what to do in future years at a separate activity to, so we can talk about things like blizzard bags, and hours versus days, and whatever else we as a board want to do, but we'll separate that from how we solved this year, based on that, so. Okay. Any other questions on this? Anything else? Okay. Good. We're closed on item number five, which moves us to item number six. Second review of the new policy, elected and appointed school district officials. So, we'll go to Superintendent Chaffrey.
Thank you. So, first of all, I want to start off by thanking the board, because you take policy development very seriously and raise good questions, and that causes me to go back and consult with the attorney, and in some cases, doing reconstruction. I want you to know that in talking with Attorney Peel, she would point out that this particular policy has lots of statutes attached to it, just as was raised by you before, and she felt, after reviewing all of them, that it would be very helpful to try and be very succinct, and in one page, be able to define who are the elected-appointed school district officials, and in what way does the board intersect with those particular individuals. So, you'll see that her header, the opener, if you will, I hope, addresses some of the clarification that Board Member Thompson was seeking, which was to say, just state right up front, like, who are we talking about? And then, down at the bottom, could you please just have a section that talks about vacancies, because that really is where we would get involved, and make that much clearer and crisper? And then, the outline of the clerk, the treasurer, and the moderator, and what their assignments are. So, rather than go through all of it, my hope was that this was more representative of the issues that you had raised up, and if there was anything else that you felt should be addressed, I'm happy to go back and work on it. But I will tell you that all of the legal references were reviewed, and then, literally, we went back and made sure that every statement played off one of those, but that we weren't saying it over and over again and doing reiteration. So, I think it's clearer.
Any questions or comments from the table? Michael?
I'd like to thank you for going back. I definitely think that this is in line with what I would spectrum policy, because it's basically saying that stating the state statutes, not reiterating the statutes, and actually then defining the items that we would have to put in place as a board, so thank you very much.
No other comments? I'll just chime in that I also agree, especially the outlining, the general statement about vacancies is really good, because it sort of addressed them all. It didn't talk about each individual one separately, so I was really happy with this update. So, based on that, I think that the board in general is happy with this, so I believe that puts it on consent. I hate to do this with Shannon gone, but we're putting things on consent based on...
She could take it out.
Yeah. That's fine. But I think based on our feedback, it looks like it's good for consent next time as well, so. Great. Okay. Moving right along. Item number seven. Scheduling of the 2017 high school graduation dates. So, Superintendent Chaffrey?
So, Principal Johnson and I have conferred, and you can see he's written a letter, and again, we have gone back and looked carefully about seniors, and they also, they have to go 175 days or an equivalent number of hours, and we feel, we have met that, will meet that. And so, therefore... that. And so therefore, we are putting forward that June 17th will be Merrimack High School's graduation day. We would ask that you put that on your calendar at 10:00 at Student Memorial Field. We'll be so convened. I'm sure this means a lot to Zev, probably. This was the most important part of the packet for me. But we're looking forward to having a wonderful day on June 17th.
So you answered the question about, I think all our discussion about days and hours and things, and the fact that the 17th seems to fit within that scope is good. It'll answer a lot of questions. And I know a lot of parents and families are looking for that date. So again, to reiterate, June 17th is the graduation date for the class of 2017. So with that, seeing no other comments, we'll close this one. So that's good. Okay. Item number eight, approval of the March 6, 2017 minutes. Do I have a motion? Anybody, Cynda, seconds? Second by Michael. Does anybody have any changes, edits, comments on the minutes from the 6th of March? I'm seeing no, nobody scrambling to look based on that? Okay. Looking for spelling errors. Okay, we're not going to give you all the night and look for spelling errors. Okay. Oh, you're not the guy. Okay, fair enough. Okay, seeing none, we'll put the motion to a vote. All in favor of the minutes from the 6th of March 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? One. Passes 301 with Board Member Schoenfeld abstaining. Okay. Item number nine, acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000. Assistant Superintendent Chebeneau.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have a very generous donation to Thornton's Ferry Elementary School from Charles and Barbara Trudeau of Leonardary, New Hampshire, in the amount of $1,000. These funds were donated to the school to use at the discretion and support of curriculum programming and technology needs. That is written by Principal Bridie Belmeyer, and I bring that to you, before you, for your consideration this evening.
Do we have a motion on the gifts and grants? Cynda?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the very generous gift from Charles and Barbara Trudeau with our gratitude.
Second. Second by Naomi. Questions? All those in favor of the acceptance of gift and grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. carries 400. Okay. Item number 10, consent agenda. Dr. McLaughlin.
So on consent tonight, we have the following resignation, Mr. Nick Kohler, Assistant Principal at Reed's Ferry Elementary School.
Do I have a motion? Okay. Michael?
I don't know how to say this one, but I move that we accept with regret the resignation of Mr. Nick Kohler, and wish him the best in his new endeavor.
May I see a second? Second by Cynda. I'll chime in as well. It's always sad to see when a assistant principal that we groom wants a principal's job, and it's not within our district. But I know our principals tend to like to stay a long time as well, so it's only natural that they strive to better their careers. So it's a loss for Merrimack, but certainly a gain for the district that he's going to. So we're certainly sad to see him go. So we'll vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor accepting consent agenda is read, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 400 with our regrets, but wishes of good luck. Okay, that moves us to item number 11. Other, any correspondence in front of the board? Cynda?
I had mentioned earlier, but I'll just reread. I received a couple of items of correspondence, emails regarding the school calendar.
Michael?
I also had a couple of correspondence in person via email in regards to the school calendar.
Yep. And I did as well. So I think we're pretty unanimous, for the most part, on getting feedback on that, on the calendar and so. So hopefully, the agenda item today helped to fill people in on where we're at. Comments? Any comments from the members of the board? Or from administration?
I just remembered, wanted to tell you that Principal McGill and Director Nancy Rose went before the trustees of the trust funds, because you might remember that they had put a plan together to do some renovation of the upper elementary school library. And their plan was approved. So remember, the carpet does not need to be replaced in the upper elementary. It's in good form. And so sometimes that's the starter, but the trustees said that over time, they would go through and they would help renovate every library. So that will be a project that will be able to be done this summer. Matt's already got it on the list of all the projects, but I am, on behalf of the administration, indebted to the trustees of the trust funds for their approval of this project. It'll be another enhancement.
Cool. Sounds great. Cynda?
I just wanted to say that I went to the art show at, what, Big Kahuna's Cafe? I think it's Big Kahuna's, right. I wasn't, I was there just before the opening. I couldn't quite stay through the opening, but it was very impressive, and a really neat display of the students across all age groups are for the community. So if you hadn't had a chance to see that yet, get in there, take a look at it. It's very well done.
Any other comments? Seeing none. We'll move along to item number 12, new business. Any new business come before the board? I think we mentioned earlier that in the future, we'll be doing an agenda topic on future calendars and approaches to take. So just to make sure that people are aware that we're not going to ignore what's happened, but discuss it when we get through this, not all, so to speak. So, okay. Item number 13 on the agenda, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Michael?
I just have one. I've been assigned to assist with the Parks and Rec Subcommittee in regards to fields for the town. We had our first meeting, actually, tonight, discussing what we were going to put priority on, and also trying to understand where we may be able to do the field. So within that discussion, the school per field may come up also, just as regards to how, looking at funding and stuff like that beyond just the fields in town, and offering suggestions on what we find may be able to help with the school. So.
Right. And I'll just chime in, that the Park and Recs, I mean, the Park and Recs, the Planning and Building Committee was supposed to meet last week, but wasn't able to get quorum for the meeting. But they are prepared, when they come here on...
Come on April 17th.
The 17th, to talk about their investigation. Remember, we gave them an action item, talk about field locations within town. So they have an idea at Thornton's Ferry that they're going to want to talk about. So we can hopefully maybe combine and sort of blend those together. So, okay. Other committee reports?
Is that it?
Oh, sure.
Just so everybody knows why the committee was formed, is because, I think it's seven years ago, a report was shown that there was over 20 fields that we needed within town. So.
Right. Lot of history to fields and the needs and the ongoing needs. Right. No other committee reports? None from me? So, okay, we'll close on that one. Item number 14, public comments on agenda items. There is no public here, so therefore, no comments. We'll pause to sign the manifest, and then I will need a motion. We need to break into non-public session. Per RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, A, B, and C. Do I have a motion? Motion by Michael, second. Naomi, we need to take a roll call vote. Naomi, how do you vote?
In favor.
Michael, how do you vote?
In favor.
Cynda?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. So seeing that, we'll break into non-public. We'll adjourn this public part of the meeting. And thanks, everybody, and have a good evening.